Take a little recess?
Yeah.
And then you can recess and leave. What time is it? Six oh two?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here.
Or six oh one right now?
Six oh one?
Six oh one.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and call it, guys, here. Welcome to the council work session Monday, January twenty-second, twenty eighteen, Town Hall of Batesburg, Leesville.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, my, yeah, thank you, Charles, for the shout-out. I love that. Makes me feel good. Um, do you, uh, let's see, do we need to do a quick roll call up here? Do you want to give an indication first?
Indication.
Okay, let's move on to the indication. Um, Councilmember Simkins, could you handle that for us, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Here, Bill Redd. Let's bow for a moment, Father God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we come with hearts filled with thanksgiving, oh God, for another day's journey. We thank you for the, the cold, Lord God, we thank you for the heat, Lord, we thank you for everything that you bless us with, God, for we realize that you have our best interests at heart. Come into our midst this evening, oh God, and be for us what we cannot be for ourselves. But, God, give us wisdom, knowledge, and don't forget understanding, Lord God, that we might serve the people of Batesburg, Leesville to the best of our ability, what you have blessed us with. Have your way this evening, God. Place us on one accord, that we might know that you're with us every step of the way. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Charles. May he stand before the leaders.
May the leaders of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rotary land in the councilway. Sorry about that.
Oh, Lord.
If I could, um, one more thing, and then we'll take a quick recess. If I could get, uh, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right. Vambrill and Simkins. And, let's see, I'm gonna call out districts, and if you're not here, just don't say anything. One, two.
Yes.
Three, four.
Four votes, yes.
Five, six.
Yes.
Seven, and eight, and I vote yes. That passes. Thank you very much. And I think we're gonna go into a quick recess, wait for a couple more. Um, I don't think we need to vote on that, do I? All right, we're gonna go into a quick recess. Ready?
Go ahead. I've got a hundred and eighty dollars.
All right. It's, uh, out of recess. Um, everybody get off the microphone. Next up on the agenda, um, item number five, discussion topics, A, Discussion and Strategic Plan, Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year Twenty Eighteen, Twenty Nineteen. Um, our illustrious town manager would like to have the floor.
Illustrious. I like that.
And I'll be handing it over to him. No blow darts being shot from the back, please.
I'd never.
No eggs being thrown.
All right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go with a similar style setup. Um, like I said last work session, the annual action plan is the concept that we built into the strategic plans, where annually, we look at the items that are within the strategic plan, and determine for this coming fiscal year that we're about to start budgeting for, what are gonna be our highest three, I would say, three to five priorities, as a consensus of council. I'll say this going into the first action plan, we need something that is achievable, that, that's realistic, that, to do within a reasonable amount of time. Uh, we're gonna have to look at the level of difficulty of some of these items. Is it realistic to get it done in a year, or do we wanna start it with the understanding that it may take two or three years? And then, what kind of price tag are we looking at? 'Cause, uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna certainly be trying to budget for it, but diet, please. Um, is it something we can fund by outright payment, based on cash flow that we have, or do we need to look at revenue or general obligation bonds to get this done, or do we need to look at possible new revenue sources to get these things done?
Yes, sir.
I'll be looking at fiscal year.
We're looking at fiscal year, July one, so that gives us, through this budget period, to start figuring out, based on what we've come up with today, how we wanna fund it, and the things, what do we need to look at doing.
Right.
With that said, what, the, the way I had intended to do this, and somebody's got better ideas, pick up, but it's the same way that Jeff Shaker did it when we had our goal-setting session, and that's to just kinda, I think we'll start, we need to start with Master Charles, and we'll just go around the table. I ask that each of you review the plan, hopefully you having a chance to look at that really good. In there, you'll see where there were short-term goals, midterm goals, and long-term goals. Um, tell me what your top three to five things are. Now, the way that we're gonna do it is, if it is your number-one priority, we were gonna give it three slash marks. If it's your two, second priority, you'll give it two, if it's your third priority, it'll give it one, and we said if they have four and five, we'll just give them one slash mark as well. And the goal is to look at the end and see how many slash marks we have, what is the overall consensus that these items are priorities, and go from there, and then we'll look at level of difficulty and price. All right? With that said, who, who wants to start us off?
Where are we at with the water situation? They're supposed to go to court, what's that?
Okay. Uh, with regards to that, we have lost the appeal at Salute County, uh, which means, huh, right now, Salute County was, according to the judge, was right in their decision to, in their ability to deny us that encroachment permit. Um, what does that mean? That means a whole lot of other discussions, and probably an upcoming work session for us to determine what path do we wanna go from here, 'cause.
Well, our.
There's a number of them, and I think that's why we need a good chance, Tim and Adis, to, to present a number of options. We really got, and I'll get to this in a couple.
Guys, that is a work session in itself.
This is.
We get down that rabbit hole right now, and we'll never get down there again, so.
This is a bigger conversation.
Great question, and it's been very.
We just haven't had any updates on it, and that's about bringing it up, 'cause you brought it up in November, we haven't heard anything, and now it's January, and.
Well, we just got notification of the appeal, uh, what, a week or, a week or so ago, two weeks ago, and so we got to, uh, have a work session.
I think we need to have some consensus in this next fiscal year, and what our plan's gonna be, so that's gonna have to be, probably, one of our major goals, and where we're gonna go forward, because we are still mainly inside the state, too, we have a, a water source, so I think that, no matter what's gonna have to be a goal, it does also have to address.
And, and I will tell you, I've, I've got a list of things that I've brought to the table today. If y'all want me to start with mine, I'm happy to start with mine, just to kinda steer the conversation. Okay. So, going to the water project, I think there's a long term that we need to look at, but I think there's a short-term priority we need to look at.
Well, it's really not even a think, though, Denny.
I know.
It's a de-act consent order.
I mean, it's a de-act consent order, I don't think that this is an option, you have to find a solution.
Exactly.
Whether it's short-term into a long-term, I believe either way, we have to address this issue.
So, I believe in this fiscal year, we need to look at the possibility of, of establish, trying to establish another secondary water source, that maybe from a pond, or some water source that we have locally here, that we can do for minimal dollars to.
Don't get down in the weeds, Teddy.
Okay.
Just put in water.
Yeah. Y'all know I get it on the weeds.
No, it's, it's easy one to get down in the weeds, Ed.
Okay.
You're fine.
Um, the next thing was the community activities. Um, we're having more and more demand for family-oriented type events and community activities. I think that's something we need to look at.
Doesn't that go along with hospitality tax?
That is an option. Yep. All right.
Is it fair to use that revenue?
I can tell you, as town manager, I'm always gonna be looking at sources of revenue. That, that, that's, uh, so new sources of revenue. I will tell you, one of the things that's on the, on the short-term list that we've got to address as well, and this is very, uh, applicable to our water, our utilities side of things, we've gotta assess our staffing. We've got, we have a, our staffing needs. We have a lot of retirements coming into utilities part, a lot. With that said, we're looking in the next three to five years, or, well, really, beginning this year, up to about three years from now, we have a number of utility staff coming out. We need to look at the possibility of creating some new entry-level positions to get people started training, to be replacement for them.
That means they'll be on, on the job training?
On the job training.
Double trouble.
I'm leaving something off. Oh, update our comprehensive plan. By law, as a town, just to educate you real quick, are required to have an, an adopted comprehensive plan for the town. Two thousand and eight was when the comprehensive plan was last worked on. There was only one reading of the ordinance, there was never a second reading of the ordinance, which means technically, we do not have a fully adopted comprehensive plan as required by law. With that said, it is required to be updated every five years, to which in twenty thirteen it was nine, and it's a, it requires a complete, what you would call rewrite, after ten years, and we're going into two thousand and eighteen, so I think.
Calendar year or fiscal year? That count, based on calendar year or fiscal year?
They do not stipulate, they just say every ten years, so I would say calendar year. So.
But we're so far behind the curve on that, it seems like that needs to be a parameter.
The, the positive in central Midlands will help with the comprehensive plan, as we did it last time. A lot of the strategic plan is encompassed into a comprehensive plan, there's a lot that goes together. Just coming off the strategic plan, we should be able to get, it's updating population numbers and a lot of things like that. It should not be a very difficult update, since we just did this process. We got a lot of data, community data.
Are there even penalties for us not having that in place?
I don't know what the penalties are for not having that in place. So, I think updating the town's comprehensive plan, and that is in the short-term priorities that, that's within that book.
How many number ones can we have?
I didn't say all these were number one.
What, what should we just have the number one?
I am laying the foundation to work off of.
Yeah, I guess we'll work down.
Well, yeah, we're gonna work down to the top three. Now, I did not do slashes, 'cause, um, a lot of these are number one, two, three, mixed together for me, but we'll do that with y'all, so. Those, those are the big things that I, I'm saying, I don't really evaluate and want that today.
Now, these are land with the book.
Yes, sir. I believe every one of these are considered to be.
Thank you, sir.
Each one of these are considered to be short-term. If you go back to page, can we, just one second? If you go back to twenty-two, it lays out your short-term, and your midterm, and your long-term.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Charles, you wanna lay the word down?
Well, I think that this year, council should be working on a new water source.
Is that your number one?
Number one. Uh, a new source of revenue.
Is that your number two?
Number two.
It doesn't just have to be this, if anything.
Uh. And I think community activities, which is on our short-term list.
All right. Do you have any more? Do you have a fourth and a fifth?
Uh, no, I think that's, uh, my ideas right there.
Okay. All right.
Four. New source of revenue. Uh, comprehensive plan is not that before. Staffing needs.
I would say, pretty much say, water, number one. Uh, re, uh, source of revenue, number two. I would do, uh, family, community events, number three, and if I can do a number four, staffing needs.
I'm down with just exactly what this is, exactly.
All right. Exactly what he said.
I was really gonna say that, honestly.
Ms. Shirley?
Water. Um, I think they should have a health plan, some type of health plan in effect.
So, he, health plan?
Yeah. Some type of health plan in, in, for, like, say, the council, the mayor, everybody. A health plan.
Healthy insurance for council members?
Yes. Health plan, a health plan.
I didn't know if we were talking community health.
No, and I think they should have a council, mayor compensation.
All right. So, council.
That's on the long term.
That's on the long term?
Yeah, help here, that's.
Compensation and insurance. Yeah. Is that your number-one priority?
No, the water is.
Oh, that's your number two?
Yeah.
All right.
What did I say? Didn't I say something else?
Not yet. Not yet.
That's enough, right?
The council, mayor compensation.
I, well, I put the compensation and insurance, council benefits, kinda walk together.
Okay.
'Cause you can't get insurance unless you're compensated, that kinda, you have to have compensation to get insurance.
Okay, and, um.
Wait, if you think of a third, fourth.
I will let you know.
Water.
Any source of revenue.
We come back.
Staffing needs and, and family, community events.
Yes. I'll say waters, top four. Second one would be staffing needs. Third, I'd say we need to spend some time focusing on traffic.
Is there, is there something, just, uh, traffic, traffic studies?
All right, that's where you start, I guess.
Transportation.
Yeah, if you look under the transportation.
I know what's in there.
Review of the H twenty-five, page twenty-five.
Might invite us sooner rather than later.
Twenty-five, support promoted nations.
I got a question to ask you right quick. Like, um, when you all talking about, when you talk about, um, what you're gonna do, you like, beautifying the town and stuff like that, like, old houses and stuff like that, condemned houses and stuff like that, that need to be torn down in areas, what, what about things like that?
Well, if you look back on, um, your short-term, you'll see, uh, housing, evaluate opportunities for.
Do that one for me.
Okay. So, let's go, uh, we'll just go building codes, building and nuisance.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
There's, um. There's community revi, revitalization. I think that's the.
That's in the short term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the short term.
That's what I was.
Teddy, the CBBG.
So, so, that was a one right there.
Is CBBG still, still in effect?
CBBG is still in effect. I will tell you, it's gotten way more competitive. Uh, they generally have close to three million dollars in requests, and they get about one point three billion in funding, where we have seen our successes with water and sewer. By doing that, we're getting it every year, for the most part, versus a lot of people that aren't doing that, and they're not getting it every year, so. We've kinda stuck with the water and sewer improvements with CBBG, just to keep the free. But we can look at money for that.
Is there a limit on how much a municipality can be awarded?
It's not. I will tell you, the past couple of years, we've requested half a million, right around half a million. Last year, we started with, I think it was around a hundred and seventy-something thousand, but they had extra money, we got up to four and three. I mean, I doubt we would get, this year's request was around half a million, I doubt we'll get full funding.
Isn't there a limit on the number of grant given, open?
It is, it is, but we generally have ours done by the next funding cycle, 'cause they're shovel-ready to go. So, um, we, we addressed housing and building codes.
Mm-hmm.
And dilapidate, I'll put dilapidated underneath.
And the transportation, that's following up on the traffic, what I mean, the transportation.
So, the traffic needs, or, or are we talking, talking transit fees?
I'm not, right now, I'm not thinking transit.
Okay, so you're just traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's been a couple of.
It has, it has.
Obviously, that's a problematic.
They look at any money to do anything.
All right. I will tell you, there was one that I left off of my list, that was stated a second ago, and going to the community revitalization, um, I'll tell you, what I hear more than anything is streetscaping, beautification from people in the community, um, start making the town look really good, sidewalks, and.
Yeah, like, my street needs sidewalks, like, fifty years ago.
I will tell you, as someone who talks to the public a lot, receives daily calls coming in and stuff, that is something that's very important to the community, is the, is the revitalization and the beautification.
I don't know, I don't know if it's even in here or not, but implementing the H tax, and I hope I'm not opening up something, but I think, you're just implementing, just start of.
Well, to get some of these done, you're gonna have to have.
That's what I'm saying.
An awful source of revenue.
Right, the source of revenue.
And that's an awful source of revenue, which would be good.
That is something that we can get started.
That's gonna come by name, new source of revenue.
I will tell you, the one with the second highest, we don't have any more sources of revenue, okay? Their, H tax is about the last main revenue source we have. There are a couple things within the tax code that we're allowed, um, reserve millage that we can apply to taxes, uh, we, we don't see a debt, debt on a year-to-year basis, but there's debt billage you can do, that only applies if you have a debt operating in the red one year, you can use it to recoup the next year, but really, the H tax is about this. When we talk about this, and we're pretty much saying hospitality.
If we brainstorm to see if we can, uh, put another label on it, instead of H tax, that automatically puts a negative comment.
You know, it used to be hospitality fee, and they changed it to tax, and I would kinda wish they wouldn't have, they would just stuff it with a fee.
But now, we can call it what we want, right?
I mean, state law calls it to have references, hospitality. Officially, the ordinance has to have H tax, but if we wanna call it, I guess on our website, what we talk about.
I'm gonna call it hug your neighbor.
But with the improvements, if we improve our water sources, won't that also increase our revenue? If we're not, you know, our water systems into the houses, if we improve that, it's pretty, oh, my understanding, if we improve that, won't that help with our revenue coming back?
Only, only, only one source.
Yeah, yeah, it should.
I, I didn't follow, I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's a different account.
But won't that also automatically, with our water and sewer, will we have.
Well, upgrade this.
Update?
Yeah.
Is that what we are looking for?
I got a concept.
You need to be able to sell water?
No, we sell water now, but if you improve, and you update those systems, and going to people's houses, you have a more accurate account, so, what they're doing, so you're not actually, I don't know how it really works.
You talking about new meters?
Yeah, new meters, like digital meters, to help with the water department, and actually upgrade that system. Won't it pay for itself? Am I correct?
Okay, that, she brings up a good one, I actually, I had about eight on my list, but that's to be expected, okay? Just saying. Uh, under the short term, water and wastewater system upgrades, evaluate the feasibility of implementing an automated water meter reading system. This is a system that, and we can have a work session and have this all explained, but very quick nutshell, it's a system where we do not do manual meter reading, walking to all three thousand-something meters. It reads every fifteen minutes, and it's radio frequencies that, that send it back.
Okay, get to the money part.
Um, so, the money part, right now, we have a revenue bond for the industrial park infrastructure that we put in, it was a ten-year bond, we can extend that to a twenty-year bond, and ask for one point five million dollars, and that's the number we're throwing right now, you're gonna be around that. On top of that, for the twenty years, the system is warranted twenty years, and our payment for that revenue bond will still be exactly the same as what it is today. So, we need no new money, and we can put an automated meter reading system in, and with that comes better customer service.
I started to say.
Leak indication for people, if they got leaks, it'll alert them by text, email, um, it'll alert us, so we can proactively go to people's houses and check for these leaks.
What do you need to start doing that particular project?
Y'all can tell me, start looking into it, bring something back to council.
How long would it take to get it implemented?
Implement it, I mean, we could have it, if we really hit the ground running with this, we could have it approved and implemented, I'd say, within a, I'd say, two, three-month time period, if we really hit it hard.
I think, when I talk to some, some of the vendors out there, call it turkey operation.
That's construction.
You're not talking about construction?
Construction, you're looking at probably six to nine months.
Okay, that's what I was referring. Yeah, I've got a, I've got a draft paper.
Within a year, you could have it approved.
Put it together based on the studies we did in our system.
Is this a rubber-based system?
Actually, that's if you do a drive-by, or if you do a fixed base where it reaches a hole.
For the department to actually do other parts of jobs, so you get to train people already in position?
That pretty much frees up two people, 'cause right now, it takes two people, eight hours a day, sixteen days out of the month to read the meters. Now, they don't have to go out and read. Now, you're still gonna have some meters go bad occasionally, they gotta go swap them out. You'll still have some people that dispute, that you'll, may have to go to a manual recheck, but it's not like that. So, there's two people you can put.
Somebody else?
Somebody else.
Or to the water department, and train those to actually learn a different job, why, why we're still potentially not as a staff necessarily what they wanna be, but I'm just saying, that would be a potential opportunity for some to actually learn the job, except hiring.
Now, I will say, while the, those two could come back in, um, they're still gonna be in need for.
Well, I understand that.
They're more maintenance-type of deal.
I understand that, but they still can learn a job while we find another candidate for the water department in that, in that presence, so you're not necessarily bringing some outsider to learn someone else's job, someone already has the knowledge of the system.
I, I.
How many customers do we have in business, uh, then?
We've got about active water customers, right around three thousand. We've got about thirty-six hundred meters in the ground, 'cause you had some cut off, um, due to vacancies and things like that. Isn't it about thirty-six hundred?
It's a little over thirty-three hundred, I think.
Thirty-three hundred.
'Cause see, we don't read them every month all the time. On average, we read twenty-nine fifty to about twenty-nine ninety a month, and about seventeen hundred and fifty plus or minus suing customers.
Tell me about the customer service.
How many of, of those are businesses?
Uh, I don't know, Charles, I have to. We don't designate it based on, we just designate it based on meter size.
Okay.
I hear a lot of people fussing about painting the water bill online. I don't, I mean, you're talking about customer service, how can there be a different way? I mean, well, me personally, of just painting it online, the way that it is, is just not user-friendly to me. Just, I mean, you said customer service, did you mean something like?
Now, there's a new platform that we currently don't have, and don't have the capabilities to do it with, with online payment. Our online payment's very generic through a third-party source. This comes with a, an analytics platform, that when you log into your user portal, you can track forty-five days of use by the hour, you can see that, and, there's an online payment platform within that, that allows you, I think electronic billing, it's called water smart, but it, it has the opportunity for electronic billing and things like that, so, it, a lot more customer-friendly with that platform, obviously, than what we have now. We have the most basic online payment at this point, so. Uh, but I think the key thing, going, not only does it free up people, but we're, I can promise you, we have revenue loss with these old meters in there. So, you're looking at putting new revenue back into the budget, from lost revenue that we have now. Thirty-plus-year-old meters, we actually had some meters that were tested, they were sending water through, and it read, and none of the water going through it. So, you're gonna, now, we're gonna have to make sure people understand, we're not increasing So, you're gonna, now, we're gonna have to make sure people understand we're not increasing rates, this is just.
Sometimes they're not even red, so it don't make no difference.
Well, any case, they're not red.
It will, it will, so if a meter doesn't pick up as red, it'll let us know.
So, you will, you will know if they hadn't been red?
Right, it'll, it'll let us know if the meter didn't respond.
And does this help with the? That staffing issue that we had up there?
Well, it'll put two people that generally are focused on meter reading all the time back into the utility department to do other things.
Uh, if I may make a suggestion, that we don't use the company, see, Columbia.
They use themselves, don't they?
I don't know what they do.
They've got all kinds of plates.
We don't need those plates.
We don't need six thousand dollar water bills.
No.
Councilman Kane?
Yes, sir.
I think we got, you got an email, water was your number one. Your number two was housing? I'll pull it up.
I got it right here.
Healthcare access. That's number three.
So, yeah, two. And that was public healthcare access, right, Vias?
Yep, yeah, outreach and community.
Service. Um, yeah, the, the act of spending was number one. In, in my humble thinking, um, I think that the whole infrastructure of a water sewer system with the meter reading, that's partly underneath the water for me personally. Um, second is economic development, um, along with community revitalization.
So, can you say, so, community revitalization slash?
Well, economic development, um, I mean, I, I, it's probably more long-term, not necessarily short-term, but, you know, getting the people at that industrial park.
Who's responsible? Either of the both.
Mike is, I'll text the camp.
So, see, if we want to put that up the ladder, we have to push him to get his act together and get going. Now, how much can put the chamber?
There's some pressure that the chamber can put on, for sure, I mean, you know, there's, basically, everyone's full except for Herman, and that's, it's five over five industrial parks, so, you know.
Can I say something about that? Um, and you make a good point, but the problem has been that we don't have anybody in town that's working every day on economic development. You can't have, um, you can't outsource economic development to the county or to the state or someplace. If you don't have a point person in town and outside that is doing economic development, then you're gonna have the same thing we have now, where years and years and years of fooling around with that industrial park. And there's no, they, they'll keep telling you, we have, we have somebody looking at it, we have somebody been looking at it for ten years, and nobody's done anything, because we don't have a dedicated, um, staff person.
A brush pusher.
Yeah, somebody just, that's my job, is to get that industrial park moving. Um, until you do that, you know, the county's like the next shiny thing, if Owen called, then they're gonna be, uh, on, you know, Owen's track, put you back down there, nobody from Basburg is, is, is working on it. So, we can't expect that thing to, to jump.
Well, I guess then that's why, that's why economic development's important, yeah, I would guess.
It's important to council, because nobody's doing it.
It needs to be, I mean, that's my opinion, it needs to be important to council.
Basburg is an open-air food court. That's what we are, we're an open-air food court, we got restaurants.
Yep.
Restaurant.
Are you feeling guilty?
I feel a little guilty, I feel bad, you know, feel bad, but, um.
You got so much, sweetheart, that's so much.
No, but I'm just saying, you, when we talk about economic development, we have to talk about something other than being, other than that.
Economic drive engine, drive something.
Yeah, we need, we need a company that's gonna employ, you know, a couple hundred people at nineteen dollars an hour. Something like that, I don't know what they make in Michigan, but, you know, a Michigan type of, Michigan type of, of, uh, salary.
Nice.
I mean, Michigan, Mittens Tech is, Mittens Tech is just like, we need students.
Yeah, because he was talking to, he was talking to me about that the other night, about needing students there at Mittens Tech.
And we have nobody here in the town staff that does that either. Uh, Mittens Tech is, uh, yeah, is a, is a very good economic development tool, but we're not working it. We, I mean, who else, what other little town like Basburg has a college?
Aren't there, are there some limitations on who the county is targeting? I don't know, we, I'm sure we could look at something different, but as far as types of businesses to go on that, or are there?
They've deemed it agribusiness, but they're, they're not hill.
It's not living business.
Just like changing some technology.
I think we do, we could pull in some kind of technology.
They're not gonna pull, they're not gonna turn anybody down. They're not gonna turn anybody down if it wants to come to the park, just because they're not agribusiness. They'll, they'll, they'll take anybody that's gonna, you know.
If there's anybody know what's going on with the taking industrial park, they were supposed to be a techy old news.
They just had, they just had ribbon cutting, they finalized the infrastructure.
They were supposed to be the tech.
Yeah.
Place.
I get that, I, I don't care about that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I care more about us. If we can pull something in, it, it may be difficult.
Well, I don't think it's difficult, I'm just saying nobody's doing it.
Well, true, I wouldn't know where to start, personally, it's not, I haven't done it before, so.
I'm gonna spin this back around to our goal with this, you know, which is to kind of narrow this down, narrow, Teddy's focusing the next year, right? Based off of Marshall Duty Plan, um, I set a forty-five minute timer for this section, and I've got about twelve minutes left, just to kind of keep us on track. So, Teddy?
I don't think there's any denying, water project came in at a huge number, you know? Uh, it looks like new sources of revenue came in second. It looks like third was addressing some staffing needs. Let's just start with those three. Now, what do you mean by addressing? So, what we were talking about, what role the county plays. Us budgeting in the budget for some of these staffing needs, um, and just having them approved with the budget. So, what, what we talked about earlier, uh, was, we have a number of retirements coming in the water and wastewater treatment facilities, that we need to start getting some people in and entry-level positions and getting their certifications, because it's not as simple as they walk through and quickly get to a B operator level. There, it takes time, it takes two or three years to get them trained and experienced to be able to take these tests to get up to, our minimum level in the water plant is a C, and for the wastewater plants, a C as well.
It's a B.
It's a B.
Wastewater's B, B biological.
To be able to be there at any point, operating that facility by yourself. And sometimes on the weekend, I know at water plant, a lot of those operators are there by themselves, you at least have to be a C on site, B for wastewater, so we've gotta get people, we're looking at, Tim, help me out with this, Angie's an A, gonna be leaving?
Angie's probably got four or five years, she's actually got a count down to her pot, because she's looking forward to it.
She's at four or five years, that's an A. Glenn is a B.
I talked to Glenn, he said maybe a year and a half, he, he'll be sixty-two years old, and he's got enough time.
You got Carl, who's an A.
Joey's already retired, he's working part-time at our wastewater plant.
And what do we have behind him? Nothing.
Nobody.
We've gotta get people in to start getting these certifications, that means we've gotta bring the entry level and find the entry-level people to come in and gain that experience, so that when they leave, they can be replaced with experienced people. Because it's not easy to go out and hire an A operator, when you look at what we can pay versus what City of Columbia can pay an A operator, or Casey or West Columbia, and somebody's bigger, more financially able to cities to, to pay much more. It's kind of hard for us to get them, so.
Well, that means we would have to revisit our comprehensive plan, because if it's still the same way it was ten years ago, you ain't gotta change.
But we gotta revisit it anyway, so, it's gotta be completely redesigned.
Well, that's more money.
Right, but yeah. But you still have to do, we would not be involved in that process.
In what?
Staffing.
No, we wouldn't.
You budgeting, you, you approved the budget, so.
I know, approve the budget, that's, that's the final step, but all of that work would be done by staff.
We would come to you with our plan to staff it and then budget accordingly for the staff that we need.
I'm kind of confused, so you're gonna add to the wastewater and water treatment staff? But you're not gonna, nobody's matriculating how yet?
It's a, it's more like a transition plan.
Oh, the job transfer.
Yeah, but you're gonna have more, you're gonna add more staff.
Temporarily to get.
Temporarily.
Well, I mean, temporarily, you're talking about four years.
Still years, but.
Yeah. But you, I mean, if we don't do something soon, we might be behind.
And it may not be, and knowing that we got something for four, I think, we don't, we don't have to go for all of it. We look, okay, we've got somebody leaving out in a year, year and a half, this year, we need to at least get somebody to them, but.
There's nobody, there's nobody that's currently in the system that can be promoted, trained.
I would think that.
We need, we need some entry-level positions to come in. I mean, our utility maintenance guys are, we've got them on the maintenance crew, but we've only got three operators at the wastewater treatment plant now.
So, you're gonna bring somebody in, and then you're gonna leapfrog somebody that's got more seniority?
Senior is not necessarily a problem here.
I'm saying, I'm saying, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be top-heavy, we're gonna, we're gonna add people with the expectation that somebody's gonna leave.
But they are leaving, they're retiring.
They're retiring, I know, I'm just saying, but it seems like we would hire people that could be, the people that, we have existing people that can be moved or trained to do the job, are you saying we don't have anybody less than existing?
I mean, we can't afford to lose any of our utility maintenance crew guys to send them through training, because we need the utility maintenance crew members, so no, I mean, there's not somebody at the wastewater treatment plant that's uncertified to.
Let's be very careful about getting into personnel, and during this discussion, and everyone, I mean, I'm just, I mean, following.
So.
See, and I say, that, that would involve camps, the only thing.
Right.
Approve the, I mean, the budget, so that's staff's work.
But I understand what you're saying, it's, it's.
Coming back to revenue, though. That's it, probably, for them?
Well, that's, that's the, that's top three, family community events was forced.
First of all, we can handle it, yeah. Oh, we can.
Staffing needs, really, that's just more of a budgetary thing, so.
This is just more building into a budget, and that's really more towards the utility side.
Well, that's, that's what happens.
So, that should go up on the water.
That should be a reservation thing, because we have no, that should just be scratched from the list, because that's their responsibility to present to us, so scratch staffing needs from the list, we'll consider when we, we look at the budget.
I, I, I think we, the, we are talking additional funds, so we, we gotta look at the funds.
We understand that, but, but we, we, I think it's best if you present that to us, and then we decide as a council through the budgetary process, instead of discussing.
If, if we don't put it on this list, are you not going to staff the town?
I'll still bring it to you.
I guess, I guess, I think we're looking outside of your daily operation.
Family community events was the next one?
Uh, what do you mean by that?
It's like the Easter egg hunt that we have through the children every day, Town Spots, that, that national night out.
Very successful.
Still goes back to staff.
Puts pressure on staff.
Were you suggesting that we have not, uh, actively work on?
But if it's a, if it's a focus of council to, you know, continue to add those things in, then, you know.
You have things that have been thrown, family movie nights in the park.
That's still more of a function, a staff function than a council function.
Yeah. I mean, it's still budgetable, but.
But they don't have to do that, you've got to staff your water plant, so this would be something that we could say, look, we do want to make it a priority, so, yeah, somebody, somebody have the Easter egg hunt this year.
You know, I think that we put, this is something I think the chamber partnering with the town, uh, makes sense. I don't think that having the chamber do our economic development makes sense, but something like that, um, the chamber and a couple of nonprofits in the community with the town's support, staff support, I think that makes a lot of sense, that, that can work.
And it has been working.
And that's kind of the way we've been operating now, Dreamcatchers have been heavily involved, Chamber, Town, all kind of working together, LMA, BBA. But do we, a, a thing that this talks about is, do we want to look at the possibility of new events? The way I read it in here, when you, you looked, do we want to create new, any new events? Do we want to look at this type of stuff?
Upgrading the town parks?
I was gonna say that too. Isn't that all part of the hospitality tax?
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah, because I don't know how else we'd pay for it.
For the, the park equipment, the sidewalks, the lights that everybody can play about on Facebook, all during Christmas.
Well, there's something, it's hard, but you can get a way to upgrade and put new things in the parks, uh, and add the cultural rent that you used to be, I'm sorry.
Bathrooms over there is just like, I mean, when I used to take the daycare over there all the time, we'd have to shuttle them back to the daycare.
You can't.
And that's been a long time, huh?
Which bathroom, which bar? Wilson Street, Palace Nine.
Wilson Street has no bathrooms.
And there's two, there's two individual bathrooms at Leesville.
Keep bathrooms clean and like that, and parks, that's not the people we got.
Well, the, the Leesville Park bathroom is fairly deep. Yeah, but make them better. If you, if you have.
It's only number three, um, hospitality fee, and, uh.
Would that not fall under new revenue? That falls under new revenue, doesn't it?
Yeah, that would be underneath the new revenue.
It kind of falls, it.
Okay, I guess, yeah.
Can we add updated comprehensive plan on there, because we, we gotta do it. And you are looking, we're probably gonna be between, if I'm ballparking this, and I'm going off an old quote, and I told Gregory about it the other day, we're probably gonna be between, I'd say, five and seven thousand for that, but. It's still a process we have to go through, and I think making that a goal and a priority for this year to, to get through that, to get it done, to, to have the updated comprehensive plan, because we're required by law to get this thing updated. So, we're gonna have to fund it and budget. Add this to the list. It's achievable, it's, it's affordable, and it's not gonna be that difficult. It really, most of the work is done with a planning commission.
With what?
With the planning commission, most of the legwork in updating this will be, uh, Central Midlands would kind of lead the way. This is what they do, updating comprehensive plans, they did it last time, uh, but they'll work with the planning commission, they'll have community meetings, they'll do all of that stuff. The planning commission will make a recommendation to council by resolution, which is required by law, for council to approve the comprehensive plan, and then it'll be up to you guys. Um, I did want to highlight one other thing, it's in the strategic plan, February twelfth, you're gonna get an update from Gregory Sprouts about this, but if you go to your long-term goals, uh, no, go to medium-term. Yeah, I gotta get my finger on it here. Twenty-two, four, three, four, five. Medium term, twenty-four. I'm trying to pull it up here.
Definitely strategic plan, comprehensive plan, my hand again.
Yeah, and that's what would make comprehensive plan a lot easier this year, having just come off the, the strategic plan. But there are two separate documents. This is not required by law, comprehensive plan is required by law.
Seth, I'm having a hard time putting my finger on it.
Are you talking about its community revitalization?
No, it's the bike pedestrian.
Yeah, develop a bike pedestrian greenway, it's based.
Forty-three.
Under community revitalization.
There you go.
For both of you.
Now, this is a midterm goal, but develop a bike pedestrian and greenway connectivity. That's going to be done this year. We, Central Midlands Council of Government got a grant. Us, Swansea and one other municipality, I can't think off the top of my head. They got a grant to fund this type of study to be done in Basbury, Leesville, Swansea and this other municipality. So they will be coming in here and they're gonna be looking at options to connect from the downtown Basbury district to the downtown Leesville district, different pedestrian and bike options that could exist for the future and to put a plan together for that.
Who's gonna pay for it?
Just funding through a grant.
So who's gonna pay for it once we, they tell us?
Once we had the plan, we would have to pay for that.
But I, I like, I like the idea of connecting the, um, the neighbors at the schools. So the kids can walk safely or ride their bikes to the schools.
It's not fully, that, we can talk about that as a possibility of being included in this. Well, it's not exclusive just to this main stretch, so.
The person who's ridden a bike all over this town at five AM and, and at five PM. It would be, it would be, if you see a green bike, don't go across.
I can agree with you.
Oh, yeah.
Your target.
I, it would be awesome to have a, a, you know, a bike lane, running lane somewhere along the railroad track that's off of the craziness. And then you, you know, that way you could go, get to a certain point, then you go that way, then you, you go that way, but you have this, this free flowing.
Right down the track.
Other than the cross streets, right down the track.
I can tell you that's what Gregory's on the phone now, just run the track with a bike safely.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but isn't that rare with properties?
Is it like you wanna ride on the sidewalk?
Yeah, they got a straight right away.
We have a. Yeah, we take an act of God, but you know what?
Well, think about it, if you want people in bicycles on sidewalk, you, you have, you asking for accidents because, I mean, people, people in bicycles can run over people walking on sidewalks.
It's actually against the law in South Carolina.
It's against law, we have a panel ordinance against it.
What else?
Well, because.
I was getting some number one.
There are places where I. Somebody stole my bike too.
This is a study that will be done.
One of the porch.
This year.
Under my carport.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry.
And also implementation of workflow management system under the internal information technology on page twenty-two, we did that this past year. He wanted to highlight those two. Uh, under information technologies, implement workflow management system, we did that this past year. And your bike and pedestrian will be worked on this year, but that's through a, a grant through the con.
We still gotta pay for it.
Right, but study, study pay for it.
But it says develop a bike pedestrian and greenway connectivity plan, that's what they'll be working on, so. Obviously, anything to come from that in the future, we would have to look at funding mechanisms.
Well, that's, that's in the news.
Management rule against.
All right. Water, new revenue, family community events.
That's what we thought, we want to put that as a major.
Developing comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan. Is that it?
Where's my brain?
It's a walking. No speed limits on the, uh.
You all agree that if we can get, there's these four dogs. About this time next year, we would have, uh, made a, a significant accomplishment.
In the walking path, uh, plan, uh, we would like to add park benches, right?
All right, so is this the four we're gonna?
Physical therapist.
Go with this year. And, and guys, if we knock some things out real quick, that doesn't mean we can't add to it later. It doesn't mean opportunities won't come up that we can't address some other things. I mean, we don't need a formal adoption of this annual action plan.
So which one's gonna be one, two, three and four?
The water is number one.
Water number one, that was number two, and these two.
That's number one.
Try.
I can pretty much tell you this one's depending upon this one.
Oh, it is, exactly.
So.
Say something about family and community events, uh, in reference to the, uh, parks that the town own. We know that we own two parks, Wilson Street and, uh, down at Main Street and Leesville District.
Right.
But now the town, which we have forgotten about, used to own the Twin City Park. And the town dumped it into the Twin City Alumni Association lab and the town forgot about it. I don't think that's fair. I think the town should work with the Alumni Association to help them develop that property into a viable, uh, community place, uh, for gathering and activities.
Where is that park, Tom?
Where is that park, Charles?
Maple Street.
Where is that park, Charles?
That's Maple, Maple Street.
Howard.
You know, you know where, you know, you know where the cemetery is on Howard Street?
Where is it?
Over cemetery, you go to, end of Peachtree and, and the Ridge.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. If you talk on the road and have decided this that part.
I'm just being straight up serious.
No, I don't think.
Okay.
And a black name.
Such, for, for, I'm not such an idiot, I go to the, forward to the.
To develop.
Yeah, who would develop?
The Alumni Association.
She is married into it.
They haven't been able to, uh, make any headways. And then, no funding. And I think the town should work with the Alumni Association to develop that property. Because it's right here in town and, uh, it's a value piece of property with a lot of historical value.
It is, it, it, it's a very, very, and things should have been done to it, but it's not. You don't expect nothing to get done to it, but this council might make it happen, absolutely.
I mean.
It would be nice if this council would make it happen. It would be nice.
I mentioned the basketball court to.
Yeah, we, Ted and I had a conversation, uh, earlier this week about, last week about, um, putting the basketball goal out there.
That would be nice.
And Lexington Medical Center, um, we, we're in the talking stages of doing some things in that park to help people, you know. Because Lexington Medical Center, I want people walking into the emergency room with, uh, chronic diabetes, hypertension. I mean, some of our hospital stay can cost eighty thou, eighty thousand dollars, even if for two days to three days. So they, they are amenable, uh, to this also. Right. Yeah, so they, they, we can work.
That's the formal document.
But we can work with Ted, we can find.
They need a building out there.
Well, we're not gonna build a building for them, but we can. We can, we can build a basketball, uh, basketball court, but one thing I would say about, and the family, I was talking to my brother today and it just hit me. He's, he's a director of, um, uh, Parks and Rec in Maryland. He, um, he was like, I'm paying, playing chess with one of the kids. And I thought about it, we have a leisure center here, but all they do is play basketball. If you don't play basketball, the leisure center is not a recreation center for you. Um, but he does ballroom dancing, he does gymnastics, he does chess, um, they have pool, they have, uh, ping pong. It should be a rec center, and I had to get to it about it. There's no recreation for kids in our town.
Recreation center puts, uh, month and magazine of meetings and activities going through the month and you sign up in at the different locations.
Yeah, but here in Basbury, if you go to the leisure center, a child can't go there after school and just pick up the pool set and play pool, or play ping pong. Right, so it's, it's, it's other activity, but.
Basketball right now, if you want to use that.
They only use sports in Basbury, are basketball and T-ball and football.
Exactly.
Soccer.
Soccer is saluting.
Oh, wow. But, I mean, that's just something I just thought about when we were, when we were young, we were running to the rec center and they had some kind of checkered plate.
Yeah. Kids need more to do around here. They don't have anything to do.
But those are costs, those don't cost a lot of money for a town.
They don't have anything to do and it's, it's ridiculous.
That's the rich, that's the county.
Well, we pay county taxes, we ought to get something back.
Exactly.
So maybe we can partner with, uh, Randy Gibson and see if we can't get something that. Yeah, their, their basketball league is, is very well attended and, uh, a lot of participation, but I'm sorry.
No, you're right. Everybody feel pretty good about strategic plan, kind of where we're directing, heading in the direction we're going here?
I'm not, but okay.
For right now. Oh, okay, so then let's move on to our next agenda item, uh, agenda item B, discussion of indigent defense services for town, our town's municipal court. Um, but once again, I'm gonna turn it over to Sir Teddy Buckadoo.
Okay.
I'm gonna set my timer for fifteen minutes.
All right, so Lacy Thompson and Lynn Walters, junior, I believe, um, I believe junior. Had a discussion with both of those attorneys, which y'all had resumes sent to you before. Uh, talked to Mr. Walters today, he indicated that he would like to be a paper case basis. Um, he told me that the guiding blueprint for fees that he would operate off of would be what's established through the South Carolina Department of Indigent Defense. And I have the fees for a appointed counsel right here and it appears, I should have made a copy for each of you to have a look at, but. Looks like a lot of stuff is a maximum attorney fee per case of a thousand to thirty-five hundred, but there's hourly rates. Based on whether you're in court or out of court working on the case. With, uh, with expenses of being reimbursed around five hundred dollars for expenses that they incur.
How many did we?
Transportation and things like that.
Remind council how many people are stacked up waiting for this.
We got about fifteen at this point.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're saying, uh, fee plus expenses?
Up to five hundred dollars in reimbursed expenses, that could be travel, that could be, um, I got that right here. Fees for expert witnesses and investigators.
I want to make copies so all of us can look at what you're looking at.
Seth, so, go. Burn me about my coffee.
I want to see what you're talking about.
So, and, and I'll, I'll move real quick. So he's looking at pay per case and we'll look at that when he comes back. Uh, Lacy Thompson indicated that she would do the annual contract of five thousand dollars. So.
I think she said.
Why'd you go for that?
She went a step further and I would not advise, I really don't know if that advises right, but she said she would even, I think the private healthcare insurance costs are really starting to get outrageous for a lot of people. Because she said, I tell you what, I'd even be willing, if y'all would give me employee only healthcare insurance, no pay, I'll, I'll, you provide me healthcare insurance and I will, I don't. I think five thousand annual contract and we not get any insurance for that. Because that, that opens doors.
What was Glens?
Glens was a pay per case.
And that's what he was making a cost.
That's money.
And, and the fees that he would use are what's established by the, the Department of Indigent Defense or the state has the fee scheduled that I have.
I mean, he actually said that?
That's what he said. Yes, ma'am.
And that's fair enough, I mean, by the time you get through the fifteen, you should be three times what she's.
Right. The problem's gonna be, I'm telling you, we could do that, five thousand, but in reality, we know it costs more than five thousand.
It does.
We know that.
It does.
Okay, so.
That's what I'm saying, so you're just getting something.
So, and she's gonna do five thousand dollars worth of work. If you take the five thousand divided into those fifteen, uh, cases that we already have, you figure you're gonna have, if you got fifteen now, you're gonna have fifteen, what, every three months or so?
I don't think so, because these, these fifteen have come up over the pace about nine to ten months that we've been putting them off, uh, because we didn't have a lawyer to give them.
So on average, we might see fifteen to twenty per year as a general reference.
Well, I think what happened when, when Supreme Court first ordered us to do this, we didn't have hardly any coming in, but then words started hitting around, uh, in jails and stuff and, and a bunch of them started asking for it. Uh, so that's why it's increased over the last few months. I think once it settles out and they find out they are going to get an attorney, that it, that it will, it'll calm down some, it won't be, I think it was peach, I guess, I guess is what I'm trying to say, I think it was peach.
My folks found out that they didn't tell them to a lawyer, they're gonna want a lawyer.
Yeah.
And if they go on the contract, you, uh, you deal with that, that, uh, that lady, but.
Did you just do the two pages?
Three hundred dollars, you got three hundred dollars.
Okay. My friend back. All four pages.
Oh, oh, oh. For a case right in the house. And anybody that's ever had a lawyer, you know, that's like an hour's worth of work for a lawyer, so.
But let, if I may, let me tell you, we, like, I, I know several of these people, when the officer was off, offering a deal to drop one charter pleaded on, I know one lady in particular that, that I heard telling the officer. She said, look, I think that's a good deal, but I want to ask a lawyer. And that's all it's gonna be, her asking the lawyer, is this a good deal? And he said, yes, that's it, it's the end of it, there's nothing else to do. So all these aren't going to trial, is what I'm saying. They just want to ask the lawyer, you know, is it a good deal? And the lawyer said.
But the lawyer can't say, they have, they have oaths and, and standards too, the only kid can say, you know, I think this is a good deal, you want to go in and.
Yeah, they do, they do that all the time. Lawyers tell the clients that all the time, you know, and.
Not a good lawyer.
Well, they do.
Good lawyer won't take. Good lawyer take a take.
The first thing she gotta do is figure out what.
I've seen, I've seen paid, I've seen paid lawyers up there tell the clients it's a good deal and then go ahead and pay the deal.
Look how much they get paid, they, I mean, they, first of all, lawyers gotta find the facts.
I know.
They gotta, they gotta have discovery to find out what happened. And even if it's the discovery process, it's more than, um, more than, uh, uh, three hundred dollars.
No, what we told them that we would do on the PD part, on the discovery, to cut their costs, we would automatically give them discovery without them having to go through all the process of, of requesting it and everything.
You told, you told Linda?
Um, Judge Cook, when he talked to him, said he liked us out.
Right.
Then we would have court one night a month.
We would not make them, we would not make them come every Tuesday night, we would, we would set up a Tuesday night for them, so they wouldn't have to come every Tuesday night.
That don't have to convince me, I'm just telling you.
I'm just telling you what we told them.
But we know, that's what we jumping at. It's a deal for us.
But if we go the, my thought is if you go the other route and then your numbers do really pop up.
They are no problem.
And if I go, um, as someone who drafts the budget.
I'm thinking if you do the one for now, and if we do the one for now, we know what, what our costs are, if we could trust Robert Cook, which I think everyone here has a pretty good feeling about Robert, to, and let us know, look, hey, this person is not working out and not treating people right. And then if we had a, I mean, if we have a, in a contract where we can, you know what, we're gonna.
It's not gonna be that, I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen. If you like the one I said, and they're gonna tell somebody to take a deal, or take a, a plea, and then they're gonna, um, find out somewhere down the line that it was bad advice, give it my hour turn to them, and then somebody gonna sue. And it gonna be way over your, uh, five thousand dollars, um, uh, mark. You need to let a lawyer do what a lawyer does. You can't put a lawyer in the, um, in the, in the chicken coop. And they'll do, they'll do up to that five thousand dollars worth of work, but a lawyer, a decent lawyer is not gonna sit there and go through, uh, discovery and, and all the things that you need to do, uh, to prepare for a case. It's just, I mean, for three hundred dollars, it's not gonna, at some point, we're gonna be back at this revisiting. The only thing we're gonna have, the only thing we're gonna have is that we're gonna say, okay, well, she's been doing it, so we're gonna continue to let her do it, but we're gonna pay her more money. And that's not fair for the people who are being.
I, I, I want to definitely agree with that, absolutely, and I think you use your judge and, and find out, you know, is this being done? Is this being done right? Is this lawyer being fair to the people?
And Mr. Walters initially indicated to me, I believe it was last Wednesday when I initially talked to him, he was more towards an annual contract, said amount. And I told him to, to come up with an amount that he thinks is fair.
What do we think, what amount do we think is fair? I mean, if, if somebody throw out five thousand, of course, that's cheap, you can do, but what do we think is reasonable?
That, that five thousand shouldn't have even been thrown out to either one of them. It shouldn't have, because we hadn't agreed on five thousand. We did not agree on that, so it shouldn't have even be put, been put out there to either one of those lawyers.
Well, even if it were five thousand, seven thousand, ten thousand, whatever the number is.
Exactly, but, but I'm saying, that amount shouldn't have been put out there. But I'm saying, that amount shouldn't have been put out there, because we hadn't agreed on it. Am I right?
It, it wasn't, it wasn't a hard number that was set in stone being thrown at them. It was a starting point.
Seriously, what's a, what's a reasonable number? Five thousand is unreasonable on its face. I mean, we can do it for five, if she wants to do it for five, but we know, we, we, we know that five thousand is not reasonable. For any, any lawyer, they take twelve cases for five thousand?
We could have three cases next year. We could have twenty-five. The problem is, this is new right now. This is new to every city. Every city is confused about how they need to handle this. This is not just us sitting at a table right now. Every city is going through this. And every city doesn't know how this needs to be done, because this is brand new changes.
I think Glenn gave you the, um, the roadmap for how it has been done. I think that's from the counties. That's how it's done. Um, indigent defense is done by the county and by the circuit courts. So that is a reasonable roadmap. And, and you can see how far off we are from that. And.
Based on the fifteen cases, we're at about three hundred and thirty-three dollars, under the five thousand dollar, and I believe what Lexington County has been typically around is either four hundred or four hundred and fifty dollars per case, on average.
I think, see, I think that.
Didn't Judge Cook, in that meeting when he met with us last time, he said that in order to be considered for indigent defense, you actually have to apply for it. You can't just say, I wanna lawyer, and then you have, it come to find out that you have an income to support a lawyer. You actually have to apply for it. So out of these twelve cases, are these actually people that actually qualify for it?
These are ones that the judge questioned on their, uh, their ability to pay or not pay child. Yet the judge went through a checklist with these to be had, yes.
And that's, that's gonna go like, that's gonna, um, that's gonna expand like wildfire. When, when, uh, there's a, four folks have an underground black market network system. If somebody's giving away something free at one, they know, and they're gonna spread it through the grapevine, and when they find out that they can get, um, uh, legal, their legal fees.
They've always been able to get it. It's just who's supplying it now. It's us versus the county.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think you rarely have somebody that was.
But it's always been there. It's all, indigent defense is, this is not new. It's always been.
Why not? We haven't had it in baseball.
Yes, we have.
We just paid for our county.
It's, it was paid for, the public defender's office handled it. The legislation that changed said.
That's only if you went to, uh, if you had to go a roll call, if you had to go to a circuit court, then you had it, but not going to the municipal, am I right, Chief? Not, not going to the municipal.
Right. Supreme Court Justice just ordered this from municipal court last year.
Yeah, that's, that, we hadn't had to.
For municipal courts and county courts, it was just ordered by Supreme Court last year.
All I'm saying is that for five thousand, we already know that's, um, that's not reasonable. Um, it's a good deal for us. For now, but it's not reasonable. I mean, the paper that's in front of you is what a reasonable, uh, cost would be.
Do we know, um, I mean, why, why this lawyer went through it? That this, uh, proposed price?
She was very eager. She was very excited about the possibility.
Well, her practice hadn't been there that long, so quite naturally, she's gonna jump at it, because she needs this, this experience. But she's gonna jump at this.
And she was, she was, she was very excited about the possibility.
So she's gonna jump at the experience. And I don't blame her.
So should we turn her down and say, no, not five, we'll give you ten?
Now you're being sarcastic, but I'm saying, you're being sarcastic, but I'm saying, but what I'm saying.
I hear you.
You should do the right thing. I don't care who you get, personally, I don't care. But I'm just saying, experience versus non-experience. Okay? That's all I'm saying.
Only, only caution I have is that at some point, she gonna come back to the table. And when she come back to the table for more money, then we need to open it back up. And I don't want folks to say, cause she's been doing it, she's familiar with the town, she's familiar with the judge.
Open it back up.
And she's familiar with this, and we ought to keep her, because she's familiar.
I still can't grab by hand some concept. We have to pay somebody to work against the town. I still can't.
It's not working against the town, but that's the law.
We're paying the guy that arrested him and then paying the person to pro, to defend against the guy that's paying the person.
That's the murder system. You do that all the time.
Has the municipal association taken a survey on this to see how other towns are, are, are incorporating the money to pay for this?
I think it's too new for him to.
Yeah, everybody is trying to figure it out.
A lot of people are, a lot of people have put, and I can tell you, some around here, uh, one city has two indigent defense attorneys, and they pay each one of them twenty-five hundred.
Wow.
So if one's not available, the other one is. They work together and they kind of split the cases each attorney. It's twenty-five hundred each, um.
I think that's probably the way.
You've got some that do pay per case, and I think they're paying around four hundred and fifty dollars a case, just flat rate fee. Uh, you've got others that are paying five thousand dollars. It, it, it varies. There's, I think there's some upwards to eight, nine thousand dollar contracts that are being put in place. If there's not a set standard, it's what fits your city, what abilities you have, what, what opportunities you have.
We need to, we need to be able to, uh, resume this at short, at short order.
Agreed.
We need to see after three months how, how it's going.
We get to write this contract, right?
Yeah, that'd be good.
We are putting stopgap or review, uh.
Basically a probation period.
Yeah, probation, probation.
From our.
We're not satisfied. We can, we do a thirty day notice.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I mean.
I'll tell you, personally, I like the idea of annual contract from a budgetary standpoint. It's way easier to budget it.
And have an annual contract, fair enough, but we need to have an out, um, sometime.
Exactly.
An exit strategy in case Robert comes to us and goes, okay, this is not working. I, I want people to be represented, represented fairly in our town.
I'm not so concerned about Robert. I'm more concerned about the people that she is, um.
Well, yeah, I'm like.
She's represented, because I don't want a lawyer that, the first time I meet her is at the hearing, and she goes, what you being charged with? Where's your paperwork? You know, and then we, and we sitting there, she's going, you know, I'm charged with, uh, you know, I'm looking at thirty days, thirty to ninety days, man. And then she said, well, what did you, come on, man, that's not the time to be talking to her about what I did and how we gonna, who, do you have any witnesses? It's a lot to go into a case. And you can't, you really can't do it for five thousand dollars. One case, maybe, you know, I mean, my thirty, it's fifteen thousand. It's five thousand, it's twenty-five hundred to come in and go, five thousand dollars retainer, and fifteen thousand dollars for whatever you did, uh, whatever bonehead thing you did.
But these are, maybe these are minor.
Minor.
I'm talking, your bonehead is like fifteen grand.
I'm just telling you. I've referred a lot of people that, you know, some people were with, uh, were solidarity, you know?
Right.
But we, again, we have to think about.
But you also gotta think that you're not gonna get to murders inside the master's office. That's what I'm saying. I mean, you're not even talking about minor offenses. We're not talking about.
I would be very much more comfortable if we had, uh, also implement some type of policy for, uh, pre-trial defer, referral, deferment. I know that the big courts do this. I don't know if we able to do it. Where we can kind of de-escalate some of these charges, I mean.
I think Robert does that, kind of, on his own, I mean, as far as, I don't think Robert's locking up everybody that comes through. That's one reason why people don't like him.
Yeah, but one thing about it, when you looking at ninety days, you look at ninety days. So a plea without a lawyer for ninety days, like, do I wanna do ninety days or I'm paying three thousand dollars? Fine, I'll take the three thousand dollar fine, sir. Even if you don't think that you are guilty or responsible. So what I'm saying is that the police should, they should de-escalate. Everybody don't need to be locked up. Just because, um, I hurt your feelings, or you feel disrespected, doesn't mean that you need to be locked up for this overly kind of blah, 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 blah. Um, and then I think that the judges need to have some type of, uh, or the lawyer needs to have some type of out for, uh, pre-trial diversion, community service, something like that, so that we really don't bog down the lawyer in doing discovery and doing.
The question is, do we as a council have the authority to decide the judge? And I don't believe that we have the authority as a council to decide what the law intends to do as.
As far as our ordinances do, we do. We, we have, don't we, we create the ordinances for.
Yeah, but still the judge's determination on, on the.
And I trust, uh, Judge Cook to.
Penalties to our.
I just think we're going down a rabbit hole.
We're trying to.
We're trying, I think we're going down a rabbit hole that necessarily is not where we need to be. We gotta decide if we're gonna be paying her five thousand dollars and doing advisory period or we're not. So, I mean, at this point, I think we do have advisory period. I do think that five thousand dollars, take it at this moment. She has experienced prior to going to the table. Offer the opportunity. We have the twelve cases. Let's get them off of our docket, so that we can clear that up and then see where we're at in three to six months and then go from that standpoint.
I agree, I agree, I'm agreeing with that.
So is that my directive is to contact Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
And to, do we wanna have Chris and Ms. Thompson work together on contract?
Contract?
And agree?
They should put us out in, uh, a review call.
After six months.
She said three months now.
Three months.
Oh, I thought it was six, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we go sooner rather than later on.
Are you saying it's a one-year contract with a three-month advisory?
Yeah, six months.
Six-month evaluation and then a thirty-day out, at notice, thirty-day notice?
Three months, we can get out. Six months, we can get out. After that, we, I mean, we won't wanna get out.
You decided to get out and give her a thirty-day notice.
A written, a thirty-day written notice that she would be.
Don't worry, we wrote it down.
We'd like to hear from her too.
Did you get all that on it?
Yeah, remember that, we just, we had.
That's right.
We still have this right to work there.
Not if she obligated us. She's, she's steady with it.
You got your notes? You got your notes? You got your notes?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, team. Uh, see, discussion possible, changes to town observed holidays. Once again, I will give the floor to our illustrious town manager, Chad.
I would refer to Mayor Prof. Tim Simkins.
Mayor Prof. Tim Simkins?
I think you had brought this up, wanting to discuss the town holidays.
Right, right. Um, how does the judge give us this?
There it is. I, I provided the town holidays as, as in the employee costing procedure. Now, I think the one that you're willing to talk about is Confederate Memorial Day.
Right, let's run through it, everyone.
Yeah.
Following holidays, American Day, holidays thirteen, uh, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior's birthday, Confederate Memorial Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving, that Friday. Um, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and day after Christmas Day. Uh, those are the current ones.
That's current holidays.
Okay. The one that I was, um, had concerns about was the Confederate Memorial Day, um, being that, um, the Confederate Memorial Day, uh, represents the, uh, Civil War, which is very offensive to, uh, African Americans. At this point, as you all know, we fought and protested. We flagged on top of the Capitol, we put it down in our front, and we continued to protest. Eventually, uh, Governor Haley, um, took it down. And I believe that that was appropriate for him, and Confederate Memorial Day would be appropriate to not celebrate that holiday because of the, uh, the history of that, uh.
Okay, being a, being a hillbilly Yankee from Missouri, I don't know what. You can, you can, actually, I'm. I, I don't know what this holiday is, or what it stands. I mean, I can, I mean, I can make an assumption, I can make an assumption.
The legislature was debating the Martin Luther King holiday.
I did see that they were both enacted in the same year, which makes me question it's.
If y'all get a King holiday, then we want a Confederate holiday. And the, and the state workers can choose which one they observe, but they don't get both. Then we get one, we get the other.
Now they get both.
Now we get both, sorry. That's all that was.
That's the state-approved holiday schedule too.
Right, that's, that's all that was.
What is it?
It's just a holiday.
Don't we have a Memorial Day for veterans, or we have a Veteran's Day for veterans?
That's different, that's different. Veterans Day is, is to rep, yeah, to respect and give honor to our veterans.
That's all veterans.
Or, and not killed, everything, yes.
Even in the Civil War.
But the Confederate Memorial Day is, is where.
Civil War Memorial.
It's a prejudice holiday, okay? It's about the flag and rebels and all this craziness. My thing is.
Not as in the Star Wars Rebels, but the other.
Uh, other rebels, okay? Now, that's the rebels I'm talking about. You got a lot of them around everywhere.
Really sticky, really fast.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of rebels in Basburg.
They have no rebels in outer space.
No rebels in my house, except for the Star Wars Rebels.
But, yeah, that's what it is. And it, and it's a very prejudiced holiday, but to each his own.
Well, I will say this, though. I think it was in the, in the fifties, the, um, United States Congress basically acknowledged that all soldiers who fought in the Civil War from the north or from the south were recognized as US veterans, US soldiers. So they would fall under the National Memorial Day.
We're not talking about Memorial.
No, I, I know what you're saying, but, but the.
So they say new soldiers are being honored.
They are being recognized, and that was my point, is that they're being recognized.
In the Veterans Day.
Well, the Memorial Day, they're all dead now, but, I mean, I, I imagine.
They're not in here more than twice.
And that's why, that's not the reason.
What day, what day is, what month is that? What?
It's May tenth.
May tenth.
Sometimes Confederate Memorial Day would fall on the National Day of Prayer. Last year, definitely.
Today it falls, this year it falls on the Poultry Festival Day.
We commit it as Poultry Festival Day.
No, no, but they're working all like crazy during the weekend.
If I may, here's what I'd say. If, if you guys wanna look at doing away with that, I would say there's three options on the table. Either A, employees really like it, New Year's Eve, we used to observe that as a holiday either that day, the Monday after the Poultry Festival. As a replacement, which I know David Page is best here going amen.
No, no, no. We're gonna clean up the day after.
I promise you by Monday, the Poultry Festival is cleaned up by Monday. Either, either New Year's Eve. Either New Year's Eve, the day, Monday after the Poultry Festival, or a concept other cities have done, and it's something we can look at as a floating holiday.
What is it?
A floating holiday. And a boy could, is basically a.
You prefer a three-day floating day or the day after Memorial Day?
The day after the Poultry Festival. We're tired.
Our, our Poultry Festival that are wore out and that Monday out.
So, so let's do like, well, that's making a floating, and then you can take the day after.
And the whole town will be closed down Monday.
Well, I will tell you, David's staff, even this past year, Confederate Memorial Day actually failed the week leading up to the Poultry Festival. They did not observe the actual holiday on that day. They still took Monday off.
So making a floating holiday, they can take picking.
Take the Monday following the Poultry Festival.
Or whenever they want it.
Now, there's a floating holiday compensate for everybody in the town taking off that day.
Well, I would say this, a floating holiday will have to be worked out with a supervisor prior to taking it off. And we know, we can't shut, all take a day off to shut the town down.
Without, without verification, something, yeah.
So, either floating or Monday after the Poultry Festival is what it sounds like, so. That was pretty, it failed Monday after a Poultry Festival two years ago.
What my concern is, that, uh, due to the climate of the country.
Right.
That if you, uh, take away a holiday that's representing a particular group of, of citizens, it could be reversed. Let's do away with Martin Luther King Day.
I knew you was gonna say it. That's why I was laughing, cause I knew you was gonna bring that up.
We can do that if we wanted to do that.
It is a federal holiday.
It is a federal holiday, the other one is not. There's only six states that observe Confederate Memorial.
Do away with it if we want.
I see what you're saying.
There's only six states that observe Confederate Memorial.
You know, it's the, you want to understand, understand where everybody's going from. The other, there's nobody here speaking in behalf of.
Tennessee, Alabama, South Carolina.
Exactly.
Floating holidays.
Floating, floating, how about.
A holiday you could take then leave it.
Hey, how about this? How about y'all give us all three of them and we'll call it employee benefit.
No.
Let's add New Year's Day, a floating holiday, and the Monday after.
No. Hey, all three of them?
There's, there's nothing reason why y'all can't give us all three. No, all three of those is all.
Uh, uh, ten, uh, ten.
Sorry.
You know you can do all.
Bring it back, bring it back.
No, one floating.
We give a floating holiday, we can make it, if people wanna observe Confederate, Confederate.
If they wanna, if they wanna observe it, go ahead and observe.
I agree.
To each his own.
So we're saying when someone doing.
I'll give a floating holiday.
They can take it if they want.
They can take, you can take, you can take the Confederate, oh, you can take the Confederate Day if you want.
My concern.
That's what we're saying, the floating holiday. So you can take it.
We don't, you can't take this holiday because we don't have enough staff to do this thing now. So you can take it because only one person is.
Yeah, we don't, we, we have to be very careful how we, we're dead.
Because we'll have to want to take off for Confederate Memorial Day and have one take after there. The problem is, what happens if a department has, you know, you can't take it because we're at minimum staffing right now, and the work really be open this day.
Personally, I'd say if we could, if y'all were open to doing Monday after the Poultry Festival.
That's an easy one to lock in.
It's an easy one to lock in, and you've heard from a number of employees now that like that day. Poultry Festival's a big deal. Let's call it the day of celebrating the poultry industry.
You call it Poultry Festival.
We'll call it Poultry Festival.
If we made that a floating holiday and everybody took the day after.
Shut down that day.
Whoa. Monday after, what would happen?
I know my department would do, I know my department would take the day after the Poultry Festival. We're tired.
Okay, I understand that.
I tell you, I, I, I love just having the day afterwards, and all my guys being serious.
And while it's the guys, see, they, they work late, didn't they?
And see, I don't know how, how I would believe a floating holiday.
Not the.
That's what makes it. I'm not playing it for a floating holiday.
The police would, the, the police would still be working the day after.
Still.
And the firemen.
There's the.
Your central personnel.
There's the, it would be easier for them to do the mu, the, the day after the Poultry Festival, because they wouldn't be able to do a floating, uh, holiday, especially the police department.
Staffing-wise.
So I think that's a good idea.
Let's go with it. Monday after the Poultry Festival?
Monday after the Poultry Festival.
Y'all sure y'all don't wanna get to your seat back too?
No, Monday after the Poultry Festival.
Y'all please do it. This, this council's on fire.
In the zone, wait.
That's it.
And this is important.
Are you getting two more minutes on this?
Two more minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
On this subject.
On the holiday.
Currently, our employee policy and procedures manual is adopted by ordinance. I would like to see ordinance amended and it adopted by resolution. Cause right now, if we wanna make a change to employee policy and procedures manual, we have to have two readings, whereas we can.
That clips your, uh, your individual basic tag.
What's that?
You keep your feet to the fire.
So, I can tell you, we went out to the managers' listserv, and we had a number of cities respond, and it is overwhelming that most cities.
Now, there's a lot of managers don't want to have to read.
Here's the thing, ordinance is, ordinance is primarily law of the town.
Right.
Is the employee policy and procedures manual law?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is law, but it is law.
Yeah.
Employee policy and procedures manual is not budget.
It's not budget.
It's policy and procedure for staff.
It's not budget.
Yeah.
It's not budget. So, I would like to see us amend that, amend the ordinance and go to a one-reading adoption by resolution. It's so much easier, right now, if we wanted to make this change, I could come back to y'all with a resolution. We have one re, one approval of the resolution next month and we're done. But now, we're gonna have to have two readings at public hearing.
Right, we want the public to know.
The public will still know.
Yeah, but they won't have a chance to, they really won't have a chance to. If somebody probably out there that's gonna object to what we.
They can sign up, they can sign up to speak on the agenda.
They should have rights to object.
Yeah, of course.
But maybe I'll, she goes, come on, yeah. I think we've taken, I think we've gone from holiday, so we shifted over to another.
Well, if I'm coming.
I think you, I think you've taken me over here.
So my point is, if they were open to that, when I came back, I'd come back with an ordinance that swamped the resolution.
I don't wanna change, uh, between a resolution and ordinance based off of one instance or one gender.
Okay.
And I like this guy.
That means on each, on, we changed the word, we're gonna reading and change.
No, he just told you about for the employee policy.
Just a little bit of resolution to.
Oh, then.
But I'd be agreed if you open up one rule into all.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Hmm, I get, I mean, I, yeah, move on.
Okay, next.
Now.
Three.
Seventeen.
Just tell me, I see any chance to come back and, to, to move to Monday after. If the consensus is y'all want that, we'll have it on, at ordinance change.
Any agreement on that, on the Monday, Poultry Festival, Holiday, for staff?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause they gonna, they gonna, uh, tired after this.
Oh, you good?
Are you good, Ted?
I want a resolution, but we can handle this.
No, we can do our resolution.
We're gonna do that, we're, we're gonna talk about that later, but I do appreciate the piggyback attempt.
Make it up.
Um.
It's my job.
D.
Next, next.
It's my job.
Discussion of towns, promenade ordinance.
You got it.
Um, I am this one?
Please, I, I, we'll talk about coffee, I'll.
We'll talk about coffee. Um, okay, guys, we have a promenade ordinance, uh, it should be in front of you, sitting there. And what this does is, we, it, uh, basically says that we have to have some light poles and some brick ribbon along certain streets, and it's all specified in here. Um, whenever there's a new business or modified business, should be.
Yeah, right.
It's this right here.
This.
Um, the reason why this came up is because we have, we have the sidewalks going in and right from, uh, about Angelo's down to that gas station on the left, Bobby Kennedy's place. And then the other sidewalk, and this is, this is the, um, uh, which, which, which grant is this? Uh, Seth, are you in here? Seth, which grant does the sidewalks?
Uh, the sidewalk repair grant is a CFO grant from.
South Carolina.
The tap grant, the tap.
The tap grant, okay. So we have a tap grant, DOT, it's really DOT's project in our town. But this, nowhere in the plans of this sidewalk, um, does it have brick ribbon and a, or decorative lights. According to this, it should have brick ribbon, decorative lights. It does not.
So we'll take it up.
So.
DOT, make it happen.
Um, hmm, if you, we change it at this point, then we don't see sidewalks in twenty eighteen. We might see them next year, twenty nineteen. Or you go ahead and let them do this, um, and we're negotiating with them to, uh, put conduit down so that you could do the decorative lights that are listed in the ordinance. Uh, but we won't get on brick ribbon in those areas.
What, what are the areas that are, that, I mean, as far as what they're planning on doing?
Uh, the, the tap grant sidewalk project goes from Angelo's down to that gas station on the corner.
That's a, carries down to two forty-five.
On twenty-three, okay, and, or on Highway One. And then on twenty-three, you're going from Ralph Kennedy's office all the way down to Columbia Farms.
On both sides?
No, the, the, the Ralph Kennedy side.
Yeah, I just on one side of the road.
Why we put sidewalks there?
It's tap grant.
Why we put sidewalks there?
Exactly.
This one's traffic.
That's what I'm saying.
I bike there, Steve.
Well, wait.
I can't bike on sidewalks.
I know, I know, I see, I bike, I bike with trucks.
Why, 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 why didn't get sidewalks?
This grant was applied for in two thousand fourteen.
You said, you said.
I know Francis been.
We need to ask you why we get a sidewalk, sir.
So I'm talking about why they get here.
There's, uh, some people who walk from Leesville District up to Walmart, that area, and they have to walk out in the street.
There's actually a guy that rides a wheelchair and, and having his wheelchairs in the road when he rides on passenger.
Now, I'm not, the guys, we can get into an hour-long discussion on where they are and what they are. This is, it's a, it's a tap grant.
Can you change it?
We'll, we'll lose it. I don't think we can change it, so, so.
Oh, so you're saying that the, the last council did this?
Yes.
It wasn't us. We haven't been to one.
I know that's right, 'cause it sure wouldn't have been me. So you were saying that the last council approved the sidewalk.
Charlie, come on, listen.
Go ahead.
The last council did not have these work sessions, trust me.
Oh.
Trust and believe.
Okay.
That it came to council the night of.
And that was it.
And that was it.
Okay, we, we, we don't, we.
So we're already, we're already ahead of the game. Um, and guys, so what I wanna talk about, there is one out in here that says, um, where is the, there's a little loophole inside of this thing.
Down here, Dr. Hilton, um, the zoning administrator.
Where?
You're gonna be, uh, number one last sentence.
Okay, number one last sentence says the zoning administrator would have the authority to enforce, alter, or waive certain parts of these requirements. So, so, so that's my out. So this, this can stay intact, but what I wanted Teddy to do was have some type of paper trail that says this was waived, um, so that the sidewalk will go ahead and happen. Um, but I also want all of us to think about, in beautification and things like that, think about what we want the town to look like.
All areas of the town.
All, all areas of the town, and, and.
Make that clear.
And, you know, and I, I like brick ribbon. I think it's a really high-maintenance, um, type of installation. My father is a brick mason, so.
So was Matt.
I know these things fairly well. So what we already have, I think it's in front of Bi-Lo down and.
We've got a couple of different sections. Those sections are not consistent with each other.
Bi-Lo already have some.
You're right.
Well, I'm just saying that that's, there's an example. If you look at that, that's what's in there.
I'm talking about design.
Oh, okay.
We have the bricks in between.
Yeah.
The, the lighting there, that, that's already gonna be put in place.
That's gonna be put in place. Now, here's what I want, our, our direction as council, we need to let Teddy kinda know how important this is to us, to think about these things. We, this is supposed to go in a new businesses. We have a Babcock Center that doesn't have a sidewalk, doesn't have ribbon. We have a Chevrolet dealership that doesn't have sidewalk, doesn't have ribbon.
We have line street that don't have sidewalk.
Right, but I'm just talking about any new business along these corridors that are stated in our promenade.
I know what you're talking about. Go ahead, Lon, I know what you're talking about.
Any, any new business or any revitalized business or reconstruction, I think even, um, the new Edward Jones office, um, close to the Great Lakes there, yeah, I want, that probably should have had, according to this, unless it was waived. So if it's going to be waived, I think that, you know, it needs to be some type of a discussion. Doesn't this, this really have its weight on us, again?
Zoning administrator.
It's down.
Zoning administrator. Now, is it, is it Patty or Pat?
Patricia.
Patricia, sorry.
Someone tell me.
I don't even. I got an aunt, Patty.
Some of this may not always be able to apply.
Is this recording?
I'm going to.
Some of this may not always be able to apply.
I'm going to.
Edward Jones, for example, there's currently not sidewalk in front of Edward Jones.
Right.
Trey did a major overhaul there. DOT, within their right of way, will not allow Trey to install sidewalks, and there not be a sidewalk continuing off the deciduous property or that one. They don't allow that anymore. So there are certain instances where we can't requir, we can require someone to do it, but they're not gonna be approved by DOT, 'cause DOT's not.
What about the dealership?
So, um, I guess one question is, is do we wanna keep that with Patricia?
Nothing to attach to.
Or.
At, at their property.
Do, do we need to say this should be the town manager? Should, should someone else, or in addition to Patricia, the, the zoning administrator, have some say in waiving this?
Does it, one thing, that is way smarter than Ted.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Yes, yes.
People like her better than Ted.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, we, we have a title in here, so it may not, not always be Pat, so.
Don't take no jobs. Don't take no jobs from Pat. Give Pat her a job.
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm saying when she retires, let's don't make the ordinance for the person. So when she retires, if she retires.
She ain't gonna retire.
And somebody comes in there, do they, we want to give them that power, or should this power be?
When that time comes, let's deal with that.
Judge him with.
Okay.
Let's deal with it when.
Let's not forget it, because it's been forgotten all over town.
No, we, we also, but we also need to let her know that that is part of her.
It's important.
Right.
She needs to know before you start making decisions.
Right. So it's important, but not to the point where you're, not to the point, and I'm just trying to get in agreement, it's, this, this is important, but not to the point where her old Chevrolet doesn't come here, right?
Sure. I would say, right. If they gonna bring jobs and.
My question about this whole order is we talked about ribbing and the inconsistency in front of Bi-Lo, and if you have inconsistencies, it's gonna look worse than if you just have a plain sidewalk. Also, the maintenance and maintain, the, 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 you have to literally add between all the bricks and just paint the butt. So, can we just have a plain sidewalk?
We would have to modify the ordinance.
So we can rework this a little bit to s, plain sidewalk and, and keep the decorative lighting maybe aspect of it?
I tend to agree.
Oh, with you maybe.
Um, let's, let's.
I want, I wanna say about the brick ribbon now, also, I mean, that can be scored in a way to make it look.
Stamped.
Stamp.
Oh, the actual concrete itself as it's coming in?
Yeah, 'cause this past year, we actually had, we had a grant to do, redo some sidewalks around town. The brick ribbon, actually, if a root gets under there, it'll lift that up before it lifts up anything else, so.
It'll pop that brick.
Yeah, we had several of those this year when we did it that we.
Okay, so we'll revisit that piece in, in here from.
Very good.
The life.
Okay.
Uh.
Next.
Continuing on to executive session, I don't think we have anything, or do we need to go in?
Oh, we're just.
We do.
We want to vote, see, we'll.
Track for that.
That's, that's his request.
I need, hold on.
We need to make a motion.
Yeah, motioning. On to executive session, please. Seth, France, Dan Brown. Um, one.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
Joining to executive session, three.
Yes.
Four.
All votes yes.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Seven.
Yes.
Eight.
Yes.
And I vote yes, and you two, executive session.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, let's, let's, let's do a little official business here. Help me out, use a piece of paper. Um, turn to work session, I have a motion.
Motion to read in, uh, regular session.
Simpkins.
Second. Second.
France, and, um, I'm gonna go through a quick vote to come back to work session.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
All votes yes.
Five.
Five, yes.
Six.
Yes.
Seven.
Yes.
Eight.
Yes.
And I vote yes, passes back into work session. All right, um, let's see. Action and follow-up to the executive session. There's a directive given, but we don't have any motion. Is that right?
Let me see if I can put mine together. Um, Mr. Mayor, I move that the town, um, form a contractual arrangement with our town attorney, which will.
Jury judge.
Judge, ju, town judge, which will allow him to be covered under the, uh, the town's group policy for his, uh, family or however coverage he, uh, needs.
I would second that. I would second that.
Okay, Simpkins with the motion to contract the town judge
Mitchell.
For health, or to create a contract that includes health insurance as part of that contract, um, the same as staff. By, uh, down there.
Under town, under the, under the policy.
And I have a second by Mr. Mitchell. Um, any discussion? Okay. This person you-
I have, I have a, a, a- See, I gotta be work-
We got the vote, Charles.
Little discussion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you would be, um, meeting with Chris, our attorney, to, uh, put that contract together. Now, um, I'm, I'm just wanna be clear on, um, what we're thinking here. Is that, um, the town judge will pay his own premium, or he will pay a portion of the premium that other town employees would pay?
Well, here-
Yes, that's what we agree.
If, if, if he's paying one of the, are you asking me the cost of the town?
No, no.
No, not the cost.
So, so, so full family, I think we pay-
We don't care about that.
We don't, we don't, we pay.
Essentially, who is on that split?
We're asking parts, not-
Percentages.
Yeah.
What percentage?
I, I was playing in Apple here.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't have a paper right here. The town's part is nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars per month for the employer. The employee portion is-
Like three twenty-five percent?
Three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So we would pay balance of that?
We'll be, we'll be paying three quarter on any place for it, basically.
Okay. I think it's about eleven thousand something dollars.
Man, it's sound, oh, that's damn.
Vote, any other discussion? Charles, do you?
Yeah, I'm always trying to get it sprayed in my ear.
Okay.
Say that again.
So, our portion annually is about eleven thousand four hundred bucks.
That's the town.
That's what town pays.
That's what town pays. Employee and family.
And his is three hundred and some dollars, so.
So he would have to pay three of his own money?
Right.
Oh, he can do that easy. All right, let's go, move on, move on. That he could pay that easily.
Okay. Better than that, let's move on.
Oh. You think so? Y'all think so? What you say, Charles?
So we need to do a budget amendment then. We're gonna need to do a budget amendment to account for the funds.
Let's take it from my line item, dude.
Now, what he's talking about is, is, is with our present budget, we'll have the line item over.
Well, not necessarily, he, he can move between, uh, I, line items.
In the green, it's limited.
Yeah.
In the same budget, in the same, same fund.
Yeah, but the way he wrote the budget is to say salary, so he should be able to move, you should be able to move some money within that.
Only within court budget can I move money, and I don't think I'm gonna have to probably go to another department to pull money from there.
Yeah, well-
For the rest of the year.